Well, we're to call the order of the meeting of the school board. It's six thirty two now. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the September, it says on the agenda September eighth of the minutes of September ninth, is that? What's the actual?
It was the eight.
The eight, so we should change, change that on the.
Minutes.
I took the motion to approve the minutes. Is there any further discussion on that?
Nothing, they're awesome, good job.
Thank you. All those favors, if you can say aye. All opposed, sentience? The non-public minutes is the next item on the agenda from the September eighteen. I accept the motion, the approval of those minutes. Thanks, Jamie, thank you, Joe. Any discussion on those? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, sentience, and motion papers. So, next item on the agenda is Amy Barnaby, Parents for Excellence in Education. As asked to be placed on the agenda, board has given the opportunity to happen and. We typically, and I think you've been, you've been told you have fifteen minutes to, okay, so you're up.
Okay, we're gonna get up the group, it's gonna start with Danielle and then we'll go through where you're, and you're gonna take five minutes, Danielle will start us off.
Do you mind just? Yeah, you're good, you just come up so that they can hear you.
Yeah, you don't need to come up that far. But you're in a good spot right there. Without being too close.
Okay, that's perfect, okay. Because we are wearing masks all the time, you're saying we are in the red zone, which is the DHHS. Even though we have no reported cases in our school. Okay, according to the matrix, that's on page six of the reopening guidelines, we should be in green. Because this is related to our facility. It's our local environment, we have zero cases of COVID, mask should be optional. On page seven. Looking at the face mask guidelines, it's talking about Grafton County, which is currently listed as substantial, which is a one point six percent test positivity for a seven day average. In Lincoln and Woodstock, we have zero cases. We should focus on our local community transmission rates, not Grafton County. If we are going with Grafton County, we need to do everything listed in the red, when it's masks one hundred percent of the time. You can't pick and choose what you want to do, and that's what you guys do. You pick and choose what you want to follow, and that's basically all I have to say.
Where's this thing we, my name is Amy Barnaby and I'm representing a group of us, we're parents and anyone is welcome to join us. We are the Parents for Excellence in Education and our goal is to work with administrators, administrators, school board members, teachers, to make the school better for our children. Focusing on what we've talked about and what I saw over the other day on the board, the well-being of the kids, social, emotional, physical, all of those things involved. So I have just an outline that I made, hopefully I have enough, if not, you could share, you probably need it, that would be the minutes. Oh, somebody got, I think somebody got one that was like not front and back, so if you got that, yes, you got it. You too got it, so I'm gonna give you that one. So I wanted to also not only just talk about masks and what I feel is that they are a barrier to the education of our children, or at least to contemplate what the impact of wearing masks is on the social, emotional, cognitive and physical health of our children, but I wanted to start with this, let me make sure I'm getting it all. That, what the school, I want you to think of these questions as I go through this. So ask yourself, do masks reduce transmission? Are there studies that say they reduce transmission? Or are we just doing, are we just doing this, how much does it reduce transmission if it does? And are there downsides to wearing masks? And then is it worth it, doing that risk benefit to fully understand what we're doing? And proceed according to that. And on the other side, just the values that were listed over in the cafeteria over in the high school, middle high school. I saw it had, the values were freedom of choice, and it said, these are universal. So I found that quite interesting. And that we also value the physical and mental well-being of our students and our community, and I also included in all of this, when I say students, I also mean teachers, administrators, anyone else who is wearing their mask on a daily basis. I'm, I mean, I'm mostly concerned with the kids because that's our concern, they're our children, but I'm also concerned with the teachers and everybody else that's wearing masks, they need to be aware of what the risks are. The learning system, we value problem solving and critical thinking, so that's what I'd like you to do, you may have a hundred percent, you believe masks are the way to go, you might shut down, you might want to put your head down and say, none of this matters to me, I'm sold on this thing, I just want you, like we would ask our students, to have an open mind, go into this with an open mind, consider what I'm going to present, and take it at that. So I think that's good, Danielle, thank you. So, I was kind of interested after we had talked about, you know, the problems with masks or personally, and I thought of, how can I see if the mask is maybe not healthy for my kids to use? So here I have, I did a culture, this is a mask after school. So what's in there is, you guys know about them, they're all pretty gross. This is a hand that touches the mask all day long with bacteria and yeast and all kinds of other. This one, you don't ever, if you're, because we do cloth masks, I don't think we'll do them anymore, but this one, I dried outside because I thought, I need, I'll put it outside, I'm gonna let it dry, and then I started like looking around thinking, I wonder if like spores and stuff are getting in the mask, so this one is from outdoors. And this one is on the surface, and it's actually the cleanest, I must have cleaned before I did it. So that one's on the surface, so you can look at those and I, of course, there's gonna be a certain degree of contamination that takes place on the mask. I was kind of shocked to actually see it like that, and I did find that a someone sent away their children's mask to a lab, and they found, and it's listed there, so I don't have to tell you all of them, eleven dangerous pathogens. The pathogens for the bacteria for pneumonia, tuberculosis, food poisoning, meningitis, and keratitis, which is an inflammation of cornea in the eye, and then udyt, udis, which is also an infection that causes the blood, brain and lungs and affects immunocompromised people. So that's from them, and I also read that a professor at Florida Atlantic University, he's recognized this, so he's made like a little compact UV sanitizer, you stick your mask, whether it's N ninety-five cloth, whatever, stick it in there, the UV lights go and it sanitizes your mask. Because we all know these masks that we're wearing are not medical grade, they're not sanitary, and the cloth ones especially are ineffective, they're not as healthy perhaps as the others, because at least the others are coming out of a packaging, maybe they're, that's a little better. Epidemiologist Colin Furness, then the quote is right there, he said it's really unhealthy to wear a mask for prolonged periods because it collects bacteria and bacteria proliferate, and the warmer and more moist the environment is, the happier the bacteria are to multiply. I don't, oh, then I just stuck this in because when I saw that the pneumonia was there, I was curious to find out this bacterial pneumonia, because what the mask is really good at is keeping in the big globules, those bacteria and mold globules, they don't get out, and that's why the Asians wear them. When they have these congested cities, when they sneeze or cough or whatever, it's held in there. So you could be reinfacting yourself, breathing in that bacteria all day. So the total number of zero to seventeen year old COVID deaths is three eighty-five, I believe that's nationwide. Contrast that with eight hundred and eighty-seven kids that died from pneumonia during that same period of time. Other issues, other physical issues are severe acne, we're over that, like we're not teenagers anymore, but that is really difficult for kids to have severe acne at, at a time in their life where you want no one to look at you. Maybe, you know, you're, you're trying to impress people, so severe acne, dental issues, foggy glasses, headaches, lethargy, are all also physical consequences of wearing masks. Then the next section is physiological and cognitive impacts of masks. Dr. Grease Bryson, MD PhD neurologist. She said the rebreathing of our exhaled air will without a doubt create oxygen deficiency and a flooding of CO2. We know the human brain is very sensitive to oxygen deprivation. The acute warning symptoms are headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, issues in concentration, slowing down of reaction time. These are reactions of the cognitive system. With chronic oxygen deprivation, all these systems disappear because you get used to it. We do talk about kids being adaptable and the body as an ecosystem does adapt to its environment for homeostasis. But your efficiency will remain impaired and the undersupply of oxygen in your brain continues to progress. You're thinking, you've gotten used to wearing your mask and rebreathing your own exhaled air, the degenerative process in your brain are getting amplified as your oxygen deprivation continues. So I'm assuming the kids don't complain about it. Russ at the meeting on Monday said, this is a binary choice, and that's what we gave the kids. Your school is closed and you have to learn at home, or you put a mask on and you do this. And they said, we'd rather do that, we'd rather go to school and wear the mask, and we told them, this is what you gotta do. And kids want to please people, they don't want to be a pain, so they put them on and they don't complain. They want to go to school, they want to be with their friends, they like their teachers, so they, they go ahead and they comply. What I found quite interesting was that the nerve cells in your brain are unable to divide normally, the lost nerve cells will no longer regenerate and what is gone is gone. So I don't know what the long-term studies, and, and that's what we don't know with anything. With a COVID infection, with wearing masks, we don't know the long-term studies on this because we're not there yet. Okay. And just to back up, Dr. Bryson is the International Journal of Public Health in April twenty twenty-one, and I apologize, it didn't show up on the bottom. That this, this study was done on short-term use of masks with healthcare workers, and they found that the shift in blood gases toward hypercapnia, which is increased CO2 and hypoxia decreased O2. Masks restrict cognitive abilities of the individual accompanied by a decline in psychomotor abilities and consequently a reduced responsiveness. So I want to talk about the recent neuroscience and what we know and what we're learning about the brain. It used to be said that the brain was hardware, it's a machine, it's a computer. But what they're finding now is it's more like wetware, and it's ecosystems that are communicating and interacting with one another to maintain homeostasis. And what happens in our environment when there's pollution or oxygen deprivation, those types of things in our ecosystem, we can visualize that. And you're like a, you're a small part of that larger. And learning environment is really critical at this time to maximize learning. We know that the childhood brain is excitable and it's firing off all the time, and these new neurons, these new patterns are being laid down. And they're reading and they're hearing and they're, they're grow, they're growing their brain, and that's a really important time for them to be offered an atmosphere and the proper learning stimulus where they can grow those neurological pathways. So if the teacher instead is worried about mask compliance, like the story I heard after the last meeting, which really upset me that the teacher was so worried about the kid's mask fitting appropriately that she separated the girls, the kids that were working on their project, and that child had to work alone on hers. I don't know the whole story, it could have been more, but it sounded like this, you know, when you, when you don't bring your mask and you have to wear the big ones, they don't fit correctly. So it seemed to be all those kids were talking about at the end of the day. My mask, my mask, it wasn't working, it didn't, it didn't fit. So maybe that's just part of adjusting to it because they didn't wear them last year, they were at a school that didn't wear them. But it kind of just, really, I had outrage over that, I was so sad for those kids that had to experience that, and for the teacher who has the stress of having to probably multiple times a day with the elementary kids, get your mask on, get your mask on, it's falling, like worrying about that, you don't touch it, don't touch it, I mean, that must be impossible. The adolescent brain is considered from ten to nineteen years old, and at that point, you have this excitable brain during childhood and in your adolescence, beginning with that ten-year-old, you begin to prune off the things that you don't need, you start, they start to get more into that logic phase and they're asking questions and they're fine tuning those pathways. And it's also important for them to have the encouragement and a positive learning environment and to have the appropriate stimulus, educational stimulus, so they can continue building that. And then we get to the peak, our teens, who are at the peak of their brain capacity. And we don't think that because, and what I put here, I didn't, I don't think I went into too much detail, but the paradox of the teen brain, you're like, oh my gosh, that like they can't do anything, because their executive function with the prefrontal cortex isn't fully developed, it's actually kind of regressed. Whereas little kids are pretty good at like thinking, like that would be dumb to jump off that, that big cliff over there on my bike. Teens don't have that, they're thinking ahead and they're, they don't have that executive function to keep up with the, their brain activity, but at that time, they're also, it's at their prime in those teenage years. And again, as a high school teacher, I didn't realize that, because you, you see them sometimes head down, but if you can grab them in and stimulate them, did I go fifteen minutes already?
Yeah, we'll give you one more minute to wrap it up.
Are you kidding me? Good lord, I, I've been, that was the fastest fifteen minutes ever. Teen, they peak, peak for learning, their IQ goes up and down twenty times, I'm just, I think this is so interesting. As new neural pathways are formed, they're fine tuning old ones, they're rewiring their brain through learning. Okay, what else is really important, so let's skip down, I knew this was gonna happen, so let's skip down to mental health, UNH report recently, I think it was the beginning of September, COVID stress and anxiety are down, but depression is up. There nationwide in zero to twenty-four year olds, there is an increase in depression up twenty percent. Here's the numbers, there were twenty-nine suicides, there have been twenty-nine suicides in the age range zero to twenty-four since January. Twenty-eight poisoning deaths, seventeen traffic deaths, one COVID death in nineteen months in that age group of zero to twenty-nine. Thirty total COVID deaths in Grafton County, two hundred and fifty-five suicides in New Hampshire for twenty twenty-one since January. So the emotional impact. There it is, you know, suicide, depression, these things, is it related to the masks? I guess you have to do a study for that. I'm only thinking critically and saying, could there be a connection, or is it more the connection of the fear of the, what's going on in our society right now? So I just leave you with, if those things, if you want to read through that. Hopefully you learned a little bit more about the teen brain and the kids' brains and the really exciting thing that you're all doing and have the opportunity to work in education with those kids in their formative years, so thank you.
Thank you. Next door business is. Do you want your?
Oh, no, do you guys want them? Okay, now I don't have to see them part-time. Closet. Yeah, the kids have fun.
Next up is correspondence.
Yeah, we just have the correspondence in your, in your packet with the slides from the New Hampshire School Board Association, and that was about the public meeting versus just meetings of the public, and the link is included in the memo, and then you can listen to the whole presentation, it's very interesting.
Business administrator's report.
Yeah, well, you all signed the DOE twenty-five and MS twenty-five, which is our year-end reports from twenty twenty twenty-one. We're gonna talk about the attainment of funds, which has to do with our year-end process under business requiring board action, but I will be giving a more detailed, usually what I do is in October, I'll give you all of a detailed summary of, of the year, and, and all of our funds and everything like that, so in the next meeting we'll go over that.
Second again, superintendent's report.
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know, the September fifteenth open house meeting, the strategic planning committee presented to the community, a presented to the community. It's some information regarding the strategic plan, the vision, the goal, and had asked parents to give some input, and we did get a lot of input that night from parents and some of us, we got some input from some of the students, so it was really, really interesting. So that was very good, I just wanted to mention that. And just an FYI that there is going to be a public hearing on October thirteenth at your next meeting. And that will be to accept and to expend the Esser grant funds, so we just have to make sure we put it in the minutes. So that, as we did with the federal grants that we received. And the rest of the information, I can do according to the agenda, because it fits in with the agenda.
Okay.
Oh, one more thing, sorry, sorry. The most important thing is, this is a thirty-year anniversary of the elementary school, and we want to do it on October sixth, because that went, that is when capsules went inside the building thirty years ago, on October sixth, so we would like to have some type of celebration during the day at one o'clock. And we just happened to have some writings from students back then, and Jay was one of the students.
No, absolutely.
No way.
And your little brother was a kindergarten, Christine and Sam's was the first kindergarten class in the building.
So is there a capsule in the?
Yes. Yeah, and the column.
Yeah, we're gonna bring in an excavator.
So we'll be sending out invitations.
Karen Sue was the superintendent then, right? Like this Karen.
Nineteen ninety-one.
Probably on the plaque up there.
Yeah, this is nineteen ninety-one.
She was the superintendent when Christine started. And Weaver was the vice principal here.
No, Miss Weaver was the fourth grade teacher, Mr. Nelson was the assistant principal at that point.
In ninety-one? When did, when did, never mind. Anyway, because it was shortly after that then.
Did it smoke, smoke?
Can you see it?
I can't remember, I did before I walked in.
Yeah, yeah, I'm off by, I'm off by a whole child here. It would have been when Kaylee went out.
All right. Mark, principal's report.
All right, thanks, thanks for having me. Again, with numbers, beginning of the year, nothing's changed since the last time I talked to you, we still have twenty-two students. We were expecting some more, but it kind of showed up. We do have several people still going up to the CTE program, and those programs are automotive, well, lean and healthy science. Excuse me. Posted on the website is a preview of, under parents' link is the youth behavioral risk assessment survey. That's mandated that if we're gonna do that, it has to be posted X amount of days prior to the posting. We'll be sending home information to our high school students, parents asking for permission to, it'll probably be more like a passive permission supplement, if you say no after previewing it online, then you can, then we'll, we'll abstain from having our children do those, but it's there, it's, it's assessment that is private, kids don't put their names on it. We haven't been able to do it the last few years because we didn't have enough people in our school, and that's gonna be done November fourth. But it is already online for parents to view. We finished up our MAP testing or EDG test, whatever you wanna call it, and we're starting to analyze that data and we're hoping to have some people come in, some new hires that will come in and you know, do some mediation work with those kids who are too, too, too instruction. Some really cool things is that, you know, I think that some money that was really well spent was the strength and conditioning that we put in that you all mostly toured, we have two classes specifically geared towards strength and conditioning that kids signed up for this year. And they're using it really nicely, we're also having in our athletic directors there pretty much daily working with kids from like two thirty to three thirty roughly, two thirty, three fifteen, oh forty-five minutes, kids are using it, and so it's money well spent, I feel like. They wanted me to pass that on to you as well. We felt like the open house was excellent. We had many families that were excited that had been in the building in a year or two and able to talk to people and actually did a really good turnout and, and to go with the strategic came out, strategic plan, we did end up having some good conversations that we're gonna take forward from there. I do, I do want to caution people and parents and stuff lately, there's been this phenomenon at our school regarding TikTok and the application that's on people's phones and there's just one of the things that I don't get, and, and I guess it's all, I don't know, I'm not on it, but there's a lot of stuff that happens where they challenge you to do this, challenge you to do that. And, and potentially those challenges are coming forth where it's kind of being destructive to our school, and kids are acting on it. And so I would caution parents and let people know that, you know, it, it's, they don't need to do these things, you know, you don't need to do these things, it's a choice and just because somebody challenges you something, it's that old adage, you know, if we dare you to walk up a bridge, you're gonna do it, you know, it's so start having conversations, that's my narrative and rant on that, but we ended up knowing, finding out who they are and we've talked to the kids and, and they have a good understanding that, you know, it's just not acceptable behavior. A, a nice positive thing though is the NHIA has awarded Linwood School the sportsmanship award for the last two years, which was really nice, and just want to say that I'm really proud of our coaching staff and our and our kids for that, and they're coming a long way and they're really teaching them, you know, what it means to have long-term values. Progress reports for the first semester. Progress reports and report cards, when they come out, we will be mailing them initially, but we want to move away from that as Alma gets completely, Alma is our student information system, gets completely on board, so with that coming up, progress reports coming up, we're gonna mail those home or send them home with kids, and then like the, after the second, after the first semester, just look to do those things online. And then if there's special circumstances where people can't get home, obviously, we can, we can send those home, that's not, not a problem. Graduation is going to be set for June tenth, it's a Friday. That's the high school graduation, and then the eighth, eighth grade continuation will be the fifteenth of June, which is the following Wednesday. And I just wanted to let people know that we have homecoming this weekend, right? So come help us celebrate, and one of these things, I just, I didn't want everybody looking at what I was talking, I'm sorry, sort of, I can just take the whole thing. I know you guys like to see the numbers per class and how it's a breakdown and, and so forth, so what you have is the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, it's a breakdown of kids per class, kids per grade level and things of that sort. And that's basically all I have, so come join us this weekend and help celebrate with our kids. And that's basically all I have. So come join us this weekend and help celebrate with our kids.
They're really enjoying.
Are they doing the whole thing, the food and everything?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Going back to the
Awesome.
Kids are excited. Teachers are excited about it. And I think they're planning things that are fruitful. And we will be having like a small pepper alley for them all.
Nice little question about the math testing.
Sure.
Is, is that the testing that we typically get, like the sort of breakdown with the information that's teleported by?
No, no. So map testing is, okay, so the state requires you to have a local assessment, something that you may pay for or something that you're using from grade level to grade level to be able to assist. And that's what map testing is. What you're talking about is the SAS testing. This, this, I think is more, the results that we get from the map testing are geared towards instruction. So we should be able to take that, that data and really like drill down into what a kid knows and really doesn't know. You don't necessarily always get those results with the SAS. You do, but it's, it's not as fine tuned.
And also, I think they have the, when we do the NWA in the fall, we also do it. Some, the elementary does it three times in the year, January for check in and then in the spring. But the fall score and the spring score give you your student growth, individual student growth. So if they were, let's say a student was in, at a grade level and they were two years below grade level. And at the end of the year, they were at grade level, then that would show a two year growth. But if you were looking at a big picture, it doesn't show a two year growth, but it shows that the child remained at grade level, you know? So there's a difference in the score.
Thank you. Yep. Committee reports. So the, so these methods even.
So I'll just start, I guess. Wasn't a whole lot. There was. So there's approval for the final plans for the elementary school, excuse us, we were given the plans tonight and the mid book, well, not really mid book. Layout. Only to ask from the, the administration is that they're just going to let us look through it. Then Monday we'll just let them know that it's, go ahead. It's the, that was already approved. There's a hard copy book that's binder that needs to be signed as a contract to go forward. We want to get that done because the sooner we get that done, the project could be good to get fitted. We hope to have all the bids in by the fourteenth of January. After the fourteenth of January, the following meeting would be when we choose the bid to go with for the project, which should hopefully start at the end of the school year, we'll say, you know, weather permitting, they might be able to start projects that are associated with it. But then as soon as the kids are out of school, then they can tear into the building. You know, Wayne did a good job. I mean, trust in his work, but I just felt like it, it's a lot of paperwork and I just kind of wanted to just thumb through it. Mark's reviewed it and everything satisfactory. A few changes were made as per discussions about air exchanges and things like that. So. So that's kind of where we are with that project. We discussed the master plan a little bit and I guess Tammy as well. We discussed a little bit of the CIP concept and a kind of task mark that he has nothing to do. Not really putting a lot into it, but just kind of brainstorming. And then all of us will, and if any of you guys want to as well, just pass it over. And the simple is just like, think like single line, like four roof paint, lighting, parking crosswalks, trees, grounds. Just kind of hit items like that, that based on this CIP that we're trying to build, we'll be able to develop these line items, you know? And then like Kevin mentioned, like then maybe we'll characterize some of them as like priorities, like long term, short term. You know, and then we can break it all off and have it all built up. And the sooner we get that built, we can present the concept to the community and, and institute this the CIP program, which I think would be beneficial for us for long term maintenance and care for the property and buildings. Sure. So if anybody else though has ideas, you know, even, and we weren't going to add any other words to them. It was more just kind of hitting. So we have a hit list so we can make sure we kind of hit everything easier. Mark mentioned budgeting for flooring, which he's building right now. As most of you know, we, we took flooring out last year to complete the roofs. So we kind of like doubled up on what we typically do in a year for roofing projects and we pulled the flooring out last year. Prior year, we pulled flooring out just because we pulled flooring and roofing in, in a number of projects because that was the, the year when COVID first settled it. So we're looking forward to get back on that path, you know? And so we estimate that that'll probably be in that hundred thousand dollar range, which is what we've been building off of for the last ten years, minus the couple of years we've lost. And that's good because that's still, as far as those two projects go, it's the hundred thousand that we hit, but we're not doing any more roofing. So he's getting those numbers together and we're also going to look at kind of where we are in terms of that project. You know, are we four years away? Are we five years away? You know, how close are we to completing it? We are a little behind, like I said, as a result of some change. We talked about the Esser funds and Deb did. Wayne Gillian has our project package and he's putting that together from what we gave him before. So hopefully, once that gets done, then we can have some kind of the estimate on the project for the high school and and move forward with those Esser funds monies. Yeah, there wasn't much else. We just touched base on some little project fencing repairs. You know, in the future, like a thing that would end up on this CIP would be like the intercom systems, you know, updating those and stuff. And we estimate ballpark, you know, we're hoping Wayne would have our first engineering package done around the beginning of the year so that we're ready to come with a game plan going into budget and, and voting season. And then the only other thing that I know was there was a policy given to us to review. And we kind of looked at it. It came down, so it's, it's not changeable. It, it's so, and it'll go off to you guys at policy at your next meeting and then it'll just be adopted and put into our system. And more explanation can be made of it when that time comes. Don't think I missed anything.
No.
Soccer wall I asked about because I just hadn't heard anything but Joe did. So Joe heard that there's, there's stuff moving forward and they've come up with the locations.
Yep.
Excellent. Where is the location?
I'm sorry?
Where is it?
Oh, I don't know, Joe.
Yeah, I don't want to say it completely because it was just kind of, they were making the actual decision.
TBD.
But it's moving forward. That's what I was happy to hear.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's all I have. Thank you, bro. And then did we, when did CIP meet? We meet at?
I don't know, but it's probably we could meet again. CIP committee and also transportation committee will be meeting.
So, so that was something. Yeah, Tammy, I figured we could tend to do that.
We'll set that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll figure it out tomorrow. Thank you.
Business requiring, oh, sorry. Was there any other committees at that?
Whatever. Is that what you just said?
No, was there any other committees that met? Sorry.
The reopening committee meeting, Matt, and you have your minutes on the.
Yeah, and I assume we're going to cover that.
Yeah.
Are we going into now public? Tonight, we can talk about negotiations.
Oh, you, we could do a non meeting.
Okay, perfect.
So we'll move on to business requiring board actions, staff nominations, recommendations, and resignations.
Yeah, I have a nomination and a recommendation. Uh, nomination is Catherine Goss, G O S S. And she is the educator who will be working with the students for the guided study support. For the grant.
Is it just a one year position?
That's a one year position.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of Catherine Goss for the one year grant funding position.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those votes, extensions, and Icarus.
I have a recommendation for Eleanor Harrison as a middle school paraprofessional.
And does that require board action?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of Eleanor Harrison for middle school special art.
Her. I believe her name is Ellen and she goes by Ellen. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thinking it.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the recommendation of Eleanor Harrison for middle school special apparel, signed by Joe. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. And extensions and Icarus. Retainment of funds per RSA one ninety eight for statute.
Yep, so this is at the end of the year, if we have any fund balance left over. This district, I think back in two thousand thirteen, approved a warrant article that we can retain up to two and a half percent of the unassigned funds to, to hold in case of an emergency. As part of that process, each year as we're going through this, we just have to have something in our minutes saying, you know, if you would like to retain the funds or not. At the end of this year, and again, I'll give you a more thorough report as far as each line item, but we have if we we had about five hundred thousand dollars that will be turning back to the town. So, and that's even after, even if we hold on to the hundred and fifty. So, and again, the hundred and fifty is really just in case of an emergency, we wouldn't have to have a special meeting like, so if we had something connected to the buildings, so maybe another district placement come in, we wouldn't have to petition the state to have a special meeting. So again, last, we've, we've been retaining about, last year we retained a hundred and fifty thousand. So if we don't spend it, it kind of goes back into the surplus and gets in the next year rolled back in. So we just need a vote to retain that or not. If we don't retain that, that would all go back on top of the
Want to retain that hundred and fifty thousand?
Huh?
You want?
Yeah, I mean, based on the formula, we could actually probably, we could retain up to a hundred and eighty thousand based because it's two and a half percent of the current fiscal year's net assessment. But we've been keeping it around one fifty.
And you're comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Are these the funds that we need to request permission from, from you to spend?
We would, yeah, but we don't have to have a special meeting. We would have to request.
Right.
But we don't have to have a special meeting. It's really just it's easier than going through a special meeting.
Right.
And just so everyone, it's clear for the public that these funds don't accumulate year to year.
Right, no. So last year, we didn't use a hundred and fifty thousand. It got rolled back into this year's surplus. And we're just again, in case of an emergency, in case an out of district placement or something happens to that building, so we just don't have that money.
And that's on top of the five hundred thousand going back?
Yeah, the five, about five hundred thousand.
That much going back. Last year was a really hard year. Who this year was a hard year to budget for with so many unknowns and causes. So that doesn't surprise me.
You know, we, we reopened our schools, but we got the CARES Act money to do that with. So we, you know, we had that money to reopen our schools. But we had, our sport seasons were kind of shortened. So we didn't spend all the money in there. We didn't have field trips. We didn't have our vocational programs. We had some staffing changes. We had, again, I'll go through all those line items.
It was a crazy year.
Yeah.
As far as budget goes.
Yeah.
Well, as far as anything goes, yeah. I'll make a motion to retain a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the unassigned fund balance.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? Hearing them, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those votes and extensions and Icarus. Denise Hardean, Pleasant Street, even if you get a copy of that in the packet today or this week. So I thought we, when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, we were being told that she didn't need this. And is this, we do need to do this? We do need to approve it?
We didn't need to do the town.
Okay. So this is what her attorney is proposing. This is what her attorney and our attorney reached as the appropriate agreement.
Right, right. And, and so the approval of the driveway from the town.
Right.
I'm hearing is, is, it was complete, but I don't, you don't.
It's not complete yet. We just, what the town is waiting for is a vote from the school board saying in minutes that you will give her the, the easement, you will grant the easement additional on her exact driveway permit. And she can't have the driveway permit until she subdivides, you know, goes back to subdivision of the property. We give her a driveway permit now. She has two driveways on one lot. She hasn't put that back in two lots yet. And she doesn't want to until she has all these ducks in a row because it means higher taxes and everything else. So you know, it's kind of a, well, three things you can have at the same time almost. So, which is difficult when you have two separate boards doing it.
So if we, if this board just takes a, a vote essentially not to approve the easement that, that's here, but to say that we will approve the easement.
Once she.
Once we, once she has the driveway. And that, that would satisfy the town and to grant the permit, then it can be.
Correct. We've pretty much told her, it, it's yours. Once you have those ducks in a row, it's yours. Once that lot's subdivided. Once you have easement, but it, it's, you know, she can't, like I said, they are three happening at the same time.
Some, some things happen this. So I guess.
Let's ask a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Like if it's, I, I don't know what her endgame is, but if she subdivides and stuff and there's this fifteen foot easement that we give them, that is pretty specific on no fences, no sheds, no structures, shelters, garages. Where's the, what's the, who's the oversight?
It's kind of like, I mean, they would be the ones permitting any of those things.
It's plenty of departments. See, for land, those, its grandfather, because it was part of the voluntary lot mergers the state did years ago and you know, it was, the state did it to save people money. They had all these little pieces that were, you know, inherited, et cetera, et cetera. Like the garden lots on Maple Street and whatnot, they voluntarily merged all those lots. The state did it. You have until December thirty first of twenty twenty one to unemerge the lots if you wanted them unmerged. And so it's crunch time for her. It also, once they're unmerged, she doesn't have to adhere to the strict fifteen feet boundary guidelines. In this easement, she would have to, as far as that goes. But as far as the town goes, she's not held to that because it's grandfather law. It goes back to them.
That's what I'm saying. So, but it could only have this fifteen foot driveway, period.
That's the, I mean, that's the easements.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, but down the road, she can't open it up to the
not even the driveway. I'm saying she can't put a fence in the yard in that area.
Well, no, the even, the restrictions in this, it would just be with, with respect to the easement that we're granting. So she could do what she's, whatever she's allowed to do under the town's regulations with respect to the law itself. But with respect to the easement, she would be prohibited from doing any of the things that are listed here.
So the easement is given for her to purchase her own driveway. To put it, yeah, put in a driveway. And she can't put a fence next to the driveway.
Yes, she could put a fence next to the driveway. She can't put a fence across the driveway, across the easement.
Or along with, like along the driveway or anything like that.
Right.
No. And so Brian's point, then the town is enforcing whether a fence goes in or not. Right, right, right. And that would be the planning board. They're on top of things, as I understand.
Now, is it common for the taxpayers to pay all the legal fees and stuff to grant this? It's not common.
It's not common.
I don't know. I don't think this happened a lot often. I think we.
Well, I mean, the taxpayers have.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that she's planning on registering, like, she's gonna be the one that's gonna have to get this to the register of deeds and have it, you know, certified and everything.
But what about all the legal that the taxpayers just had to pay for this? Should she be responsible for all that?
Any documentation that the town needed as far as league, like, like this?
Yeah.
She provided to us from her attorney, and we just paid ours to look it over. We, the town did not pay to create anything. That was all on her. So the, the school went about it a little differently.
Yes.
Because it's new to the school, and that, you know, maybe you'll have heard there, that the town does it more often, I think, so it's kind of a. And any recording fees, anything like that will be paid by.
By her. I was more concerned about how much legal fees that we had to get to this point. For her, why should the taxpayers have to pay that? Shouldn't there be something in there that says she picks up those fees, or? I mean, it shouldn't be on the taxpayers.
I think it's a little late to jump over that branch. I think this was a learning
Yeah.
experience for the school, and now.
I mean, I know, I know the history behind it, too, so, because I know when they first cut that, there was a complaint, so the town had to plant trees there, because she was upset that we put that there, and now they're, so, I mean, there's a lot of history to this.
She was, yeah.
I just feel bad.
There was a lot of misunderstanding, too, that.
Oh, yeah.
On. Yeah, there was a misunderstanding there, too, on who is entitled to, or have rights to.
Yeah.
What also.
I think that's a part of the messiness of this particular issue was, was in regards to what happened with the town's easement. And we had to get that all figured out.
Oh, yeah.
So that was sort of on us to get sorted out.
Yeah, I agree with that. I just don't see why, like I said, I don't see why the taxpayers have to pay for her, the legal fees brought on by her to get this easement. I just think that would be written in the writing, in the writing somewhere, that she would have to pick that stuff up, or, that's just my opinion. You know, I'm not saying the board is saying this, that's my personal opinion.
Should be in here that. That Denise Harrodine will be responsible for all recording fees and filing fees?
I mean, she's the one that wants it filed and recorded, so. We're just not gonna do it for her. If it doesn't get filed and recorded, that's on her, she doesn't have to.
I guess I should ask, do we have substantial legal fees that we put into this as far as?
I'd have to break it down on how key.
Okay, but, but the taxpayers will get, I mean, we have paid legal fees for this.
Yes.
So. I don't know.
Yeah, if, I, we may have a difficulty, yeah, I understand where you're getting, I think we may have difficulties parsing the amount, simply because a lot of what we were doing was sorting out what happened with legal easement and everything, and so.
Oh, I agree.
It's, you know, that was.
Well, what's gonna, I mean, is anything in this gonna stop, say, Jeanette wants to put one in on the easement over there, because she wants to move her driveway over there? Is there anything that we can do to say no now if we start this?
Absolutely. None of this action says precedent, precedent.
Okay.
They're all individually identified, so, yeah, right.
Of course, that could turn into, you know, you did it for not much, and you do it for.
But legally not valid. It's.
No, I know, and we're not legally bound to do this either.
And if we grant Ms. Harrodine her easement, and it's all done, and everything, and she has driveway, and it's good to go, having another one on another piece of property, even right next door, is a completely different scenario, and they need to be looked at individually.
Yeah.
And there could be reasons why we grant this on the easement, and specific reasons why we don't grant this on the easement, so they're.
I mean, she had, she had those two lots before we put that thing in, so. I mean, it was put on like we owe her this, but we don't, the taxpayers don't owe her this.
Absolutely not, no.
Because her two lots were there before the town.
And that's where it got a little muddy, too. It's like the town required her to have her attorney do anything that he's done on the town, and as far as legal documents. The school didn't, because the school still had to clean up that town easement.
Yeah.
So it was kind of a, you know, stacked in together thing, so that one's a little muddy, and I absolutely get what you're saying, and I totally agree, however, this one was a little muddy. It was not as cut and dry as it should have been.
So, so what the board would need to do now is just to approve whether the superintendent of the chair signs the easement, so that we can move forward with it.
I would like something added into the easement with the agreement, that she is responsible for any and all recording fees and ensuring a timely recording.
Yeah, and I I guess I have a question, do we need to do that now? Because, and what Tammy was saying was, all we need to do is say, if you get all of your other ducks in a row, and you can, then we will approve it. As opposed to approving it and signing it now, granting something that doesn't actually end up ever coming to fruition, because she doesn't sort out the other components of what she would need to do, which would be the subdivision and a lot, you know, all the other driveway approvals and things like that, so if we were to.
Could be, once Denise Harrodine has her driveway permit, and the school can record those dimensions specifically in the easement, then with the addition of the language of a timely recording, and Ms. Harrodine pay those fees, then we could give Judy, Judith McGann, permission to sign that easement on behalf of the board. There, it's kind of long-winded, but that's my motion.
But what, what if we find out that the taxpayers just paid fifteen thousand dollars in legal fees to do this, and we truly find out how much those legal fees were before we.
I think. I don't disagree with you, however, I think the bulk of the legal fees are gonna be on the sorting out of the town's easement, not so much this stuff, honestly.
But I don't know that, so it's hard for me to vote on something like that when I don't know that, I don't.
So if it comes back, say that she did pass fifteen thousand, what would you intend then? What would your intention be that?
I would say that it would be at her cost for this easement. Why should the taxpayers pay for her easement?
Do you think that attorney Graham could itemize the time he spent on the town versus the time he spent creating this document?
And this is like, there is a time sensitive aspect to this. I don't know that it's necessarily.
I don't think one more meeting is gonna matter.
Yeah, I would appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, so if everybody is on board, it sounds like at least four of us are, anyway, that was just putting that on for continuing business or next meetings, board action. Okay, that brings in continuing business. And the COVID nineteen reopening plan review.
You got the committee minutes when you're, you're back in.
The. Yeah, we all got the, the meetings, I mean, the minutes.
Can I ask, do we have COVID in our school? Was there? Okay, so there was.
There was.
Okay.
Yeah, we all got notified that there were two positive cases.
That's what I thought.
There was an alcohol and an email, yeah.
So that was confirmed.
I know there are two positive cases in, I guess it's one in Lincoln, one in Woodstock right now, on that students. And not staff at school, but there are positive cases still in town, and there were several.
But not in the school.
It, it was a whole class at the childcare center shut down this solid week. Yeah.
I guess, are there any motions with respect to changes to the current COVID plan?
No, they answered my question in there about if we could do it while the kids are sitting down, but definitely we can't do the social distancing while the kids are sitting in their classroom, there's not enough room, that was discussed.
In some classes, there aren't enough rooms, but other classes, there are.
Because that, that was my only problem with the whole plan, was that when the kids are sitting down, actually learning, if they could take their mask off, like we were doing, like you do in the restaurants or anywhere else. That was my only thing, but if we can't do that, then I, I'm for wearing masks. So I would say no, Jim.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
With no motion on the floor, we will move on to the strategic plan. I notice the strategic planning votes were at the open house.
Yes, yes, and right now, we're just finishing up, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're just finishing up getting input from staff now, so. So we get all the input from the, you know, community and parents, and now we're just getting input from the staff, so we're getting all of our data collected, and Mark Dolan is doing the same, and we've been set up another meeting.
That's his ask. We don't have another meeting scheduled right now, do we? Because I was looking, I didn't see one, I wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
Was there good, was there this amount of input at the open houses?
Most, we've gotten thus far. Great discussions, great discussions with, yeah, a lot of positive input, I think it's some good ideas to.
Did you recruit any other participants?
Yes, we did.
Get some people that, that's gonna show.
It's real, it was really great, it's a great night.
Fantastic.
All right. As for funds, I know we talked a little bit about those, I mean, we've covered that, okay. Recognition of visitors, public participation, let's see, any students? Do we have staff over here? Do we have any staff rapport, or? Okay. And members of the community?
Yeah, I would like to, the reopening committee, there was a recommendation sent to the board to get input from the parents, a survey, and I didn't hear that voted on. That was the recommendation that came from the reopening committee, I believe. We went to the meeting on Monday, it was voted eight to five that that reopening committee, excuse me, would recommend to have a survey, so what happened?
There was no motion on, on the floor.
So that was something that wasn't, okay, and the other thing, as Danielle pointed out, your universal mask, and you're saying this is substantial, it's red, then you need to start doing it cohorts. Athletes, classes, lunch outside, if we're in red and this is substantial, then stop playing à la carte with the mitigation strategies. If you're saying we're frightened, and Democrats, assuming some of you are, Democrats have a misunderstanding of the actual results of being hospitalized, they believe, a New York Times thing said that Democrats, eighty percent of them believe that there is like upwards of fifty percent chance of you being hospitalized with COVID. The real, the real number is one percent to five percent will be hospitalized. We know the hospitalization numbers are being inflated. But kids got it, there's natural immunity. If you had this, had this protocol or this standard of one point six percent positivity rates for flu for, for your entire life, you would have been wearing masks, you would have been in lockdowns, and you would have been shutting your society down. This is no different, this is actually less severe than flu. Kids get sick. Let them get sick, they build natural immunity. They don't need this vaccination, that now that all of the COVID that's going around is Delta virus, it's not the Wuhan, which was more deadly, this is more contagious, more highly contagious and less severe. These kids have an immune system, they need to get sick. COVID goes from the common cold to now this Delta variant. I believe Vicky seems like she's waiting to vaccinate every child until she feels comfortable to say, we're good. That's what I gathered from the reopening the other day. We have all the teachers vaccinated. The kids get sick, it seems like it's working. Some, we are notified, someone outside who's connected to whatever, three people, they found them, kids are not getting it in school, there's not transmission at school. These are people outside in the community who hopefully they're being responsible, because we're finding this out, they're quarantining, they're doing what they need to do, they're putting their mask on, they're letting it be known, they're reporting it. It hasn't made it onto the, the M U R, where they're tracking all the towns. Wentworth had nineteen, Plymouth with seven hundred students with mass choice had four. So I, I, I just. I find it interesting that we didn't vote on the survey. In your values, one you should put on there is hypocrisy. Put that on with your values.
Any other members of the community would like to be recognized?
Before I go, I want to add to your TikTok. There's a big thing also on stealing. They're not just wrecking things, the challenge is to steal something, so if teachers are missing something, they should probably check TikTok. It is a huge challenge, it's going along in all the educational programs or schools and communities.
Things like teachers' keys.
Yeah, lots of that stuff is seen there.
Damage to teachers' vehicles.
It's beyond that.
Like it's.
Anyways, just thought I'd throw that out there.
Thank you.
I'm in the, in the education field, so I wanted to come up, talk a little bit about what Amy just talked about, I'm talking Barnaby, that the reopening committee, there was a vote to actually send it to public notice or, or put public input. And I believe it was in favor of it. And I just heard tonight how much great public information you got from the, for the strategic planning from listening to the parents at an open house. But yet we don't want to listen to the parents. I also heard that it was said in that meeting, which is very disturbing to me, that the parents aren't informed enough to make this decision. I think there's some people here today who showed you a lot of information. A lot of information, and they're not, we're not taking information, we're not just going down one rabbit hole and think that we are just, you know, resetting the whole world and the world's coming to an end, or, you know, the conspiracy theory. We're doing studies on both sides, and I think parents and the community have that capability. I think they're intelligent enough to make their own choices. I think they have that right also. I think that's important. We all want that right, but yet we want to take it away. You know, they, I've talked to people in the community, and I'm, they don't want to come because they don't have time, shame on them, to come and talk. The other thing I heard is, the board doesn't listen, shame on you, which bothers me because you were voted on by that. And they didn't vote you because they think they want you to make all their decisions. They voted because they believe you're gonna listen to them. And you give, you don't even give them the opportunity on a highly big subject like the masks. That's what's kind of bothering me the most. I, I listened to that committee meeting and that to think that the public doesn't have. And if the public heard that, I would be bothered if I were you, for you to believe that the public doesn't, can't, isn't, can't get informed enough. You all did, you're making your decisions, and as we've heard tonight, C D C and D H H S, we're in the green. The recommendation is no masks.
I'm gonna pull the word, oh, sorry, is anyone else that wants to speak?
I, I have one thing to say. I just want to know what has to happen for you to take the masks away or to make them optional. I go into your restaurant, no one's wearing a mask, the waiters, the cook.
Own a restaurant.
No one, come on.
I don't have a restaurant.
Your husband.
No, that has me, though.
You guys will use me as an example, you guys called my place a business.
Geez.
Outright called my business to find out what my policies were.
I didn't, I don't even know what you do.
I follow policy, so the policy at my place, I follow, the policy here, I follow.
I want to know what we have to do, we are zero cases. What is it gonna take?
What is it going to take for you to say masks are optional?
People to stop dying.
Who's dying?
Can you give me the social?
No one in our community is dying. No one has it. You guys are insane.
You're out of water.
Do you have any other social emotional stresses of being pulled from school, taken off?
My son has ticks, okay? And he has to wear that mask for eight hours a day and it bothers him. So don't you tell me what is going on.
But I'm asking you, is there, is there research discussing what happens to the children that are pulled out of school?
Yes, that was a negative thing and that's what I'm seeing as a bias.
I'm asking, I'm just asking.
You're putting kids between the proverbial rock and a hard place. And you say to them, dangle this carrot over here if you want to go to school and they do, they need that. And then when they get to school, some of them last year got vaccinated thinking if they were vaccinated, they would no longer have to wear a mask.
Okay, we're, okay, hold on a second. We're, we're. We're well outside of.
And what happened to having seventy percent of the students vaccinated, you wouldn't need a mask.
Out of water. If you could just please, we're trying to bring this back to the, to the public comment here. It's your floor. You have a minute and a half left. If you'd like to continue saying something.
I just want to know what has to happen. We have zero cases of COVID in our school. Why are they not optional?
If you read carefully, the reopening plan, it details exactly what needs to happen.
We're in green. It's our facility. We should be option. How are we not green?
It's conflicting. I think Danielle said there's two conflicting things. The matrix.
Ma'am.
Says, tell Danielle.
The matrix is that you're looking at page six for our facility. If no one has COVID, we are optional. You're looking at Grafton County, the whole county as a whole.
So you're choosing one standard for masks.
You are. You want all masks, but then you let cohorts from elementary come into the middle school. You don't follow everything. No one washes their hands. No one is changing their mask. It's ridiculous. If you're going to do masks, you have to do it the whole way or you don't do them.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have one more thing I forgot to ask. Tucker again. At that meeting, I also heard a lot about data that I kept hearing the word data, that the public don't know the data. I would like you guys to please put out the data. I want to know the data that you're using. Inform your public, inform your people. Don't tell us to go to a website because we did and you just heard what happened with the information that we followed. Give us your data that you're using to make this decision. We've provided you with a lot of data right in front of you. Please give us the data, the numbers, the statistics that show why you're making this choice. I think that's fair and I think that's the way leadership should go.
I'll go Amy Barnaby. Decision making is an art and a science. And I see what you've done here is, and I, I talked, we talked to Kyla Welch, Plymouth's superintendent. We couldn't understand. We said, but they're telling us they're doing D H H S and CDC. She's like, so am I. And we're optional and she has seven hundred kids and then all the different schools and they have varying degrees. So I couldn't quite understand that until I realized this is what she's, she's like, I use the matrix. I'm like, well, so are we, but we were wearing masks and we have nothing. I don't get it. She's using this for everything, for everything. They're using, this says cases within the facility. So this is looking locally and in your school. That's what she's using for everything from masks through to the whole thing, cohorts, the whole thing. So that's what she's using to base everything, I imagine. And then on the list here, health in action, it says physical distancing and then face coverings. Now we're going to use a different standard. We're going to use the COVID nineteen tracking from the D H H S decision matrix. And that's where you find that it says in Grafton County. Well, I would like to know where these cases. Is there a nursing home in Grafton County where people over seventy are dying? Because COVID is a disease of the obese, overweight elderly and comorbid people with comorbidities. These healthy children should not be wearing masks. You're only making them sick, exposing them to their own bacteria, reducing the oxygen. They are healthy children, especially if we in the hallways wear masks, they sit down, they can spread out. They need to hear their teacher. If they can distance and have a teacher at a distance where they can hear and see the expressions on that teacher's face to understand the kids that are falling behind are the ones that are already behind. The L D kids, the kids with social emotional issues, those are the kids and we want to see all those MAP scores. And by the way, I called the N I W A office at the D New Hampshire D O E and she said there shouldn't be all this extended time. Kids that are taking it a couple of days in a row. You have a time period, you take the test, otherwise it no longer is standardized. That's what she said, but then she also said, well, I could understand if it's always the same and every kid that's doing it, like if you're allowing all of them. But usually extended time is five oh four I E P that you would have that extra time. So as long as you're measuring, but she had questions about doing that. So I just wonder, how can you have a standardized test that's not standardized? So I wonder about that and what the school's policy is on taking those MAP tests. If you're given a two hour period, but some kids get to do it two days and have four hours, is that okay? But I think you seriously, I don't understand. You either, we need to go full on like last year. There's no COVID, but when you walk in this school and Linwood's campus, we are like pandemic central red alert, except for we're not doing cohorts and the other mitigation strategies. So you need to make a decision. Then the mixed messages between putting a mask on, but no hand washing, everybody's bumping up next to each other.
Thank you, Ms. Barn.
You need to make a decision.
Okay, I'm going to pull the board to go. Well, actually, before we do that, I'm going to make an announcement like this. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Going forward, we're going to be enforcing the mask policy at the meetings as well. We didn't do that this evening to give you folks a heads up. If you cannot or do not wish to wear a mask, we live stream the meetings. You can submit your comments in advance. If you have responsive comments, you could submit them by email after the meeting.
Can we zoom in?
What's that?
Can we zoom to speak?
You cannot. You cannot participate remotely, but you can submit any responsive comments that you have to the board after the meeting. We will be forwarded all those comments. If you have any comments, the agenda is posted in advance of meetings. You can comment on any agenda item in advance of the meeting and those will be forwarded to the board as well. So at this point.
Is this your way of getting rid of us?
At this point, we'll call the board to go in the non-public. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Is the only thing in non-public is that the negotiation?
I don't know, actually. So I don't know if there was some additional non-public items.
Because I was going to exclude myself. So do I?
Oh.
Is that the only thing? Is that the only thing?
It can be a non-meeting. So you can, you can close this meeting out and then go into a non-meeting. And yes, you're correct.
Yes. Well, I know I want to exclude myself, but do I vote to go in the non-public or do I just?
Are we going to?
Yeah, that was a executive. Bring my copy. You guys don't want to put that up.
And there was nothing else for non-public?
Okay, then I guess we will. Yep.
So I misread the thing in the real about the survey. Are we doing the survey for parents?
We would have needed to make a motion to do that and approve that motion tonight and nobody made the motion.
Is this non-public or are you guys still?
No, we're still on. We're still on. I mean, we're still in a meeting. If you wanted to make the motion.
I just feel like that should be done. If it got voted approved in the reopening committee, that's clearly what they want.
That was the committee's recommendation to us that we vote on whether to do the survey or not.
Okay.
Now that we designed the survey.
That's what the motion was voted on.
That's what it, it says.
The word creates.
Their recommendation, yeah, that the board, we recommend that the board develop a survey. The board develop a survey regarding face mask use and other COVID related protocols to get an input from stakeholders. Right.
So we can, tonight we can actually vote to do it. We just don't have to make it tonight or?
Correct.
Well, yeah, we don't.
You'd have to vote to do it. It would need a motion in a second and then.
I'm okay with that. That's what the vote wanted.
But that's clearly.
It wasn't the voters. It was a reopening committee and it was eight. Yeah, eight to five. Eight people wanted to send it, wanted the board to vote on it and five people did no.
So could the reopening committee send out that survey themselves or no?
That's a board action.
I mean, what could it hurt?
I think we are already getting feedback. We're talking about collecting phone calls, emailing. People have given feedback on the reopening plan.
Right, but what if people don't know how to do that?
People don't know how to send an email or show up to a meeting?
Or, or cans or, you know, like is that equitable?
That don't, but it's very true. If there are.
Well, imagine if we were to create a survey, it would be an online survey. Well, right.
It'd be an online survey, just like the strategic planning or, you know, anything else. If they choose to fill it out, great. If they don't, great.
My greatest hesitation is that if we were to do that, you are asking a large number of people that are not epidemiologists or doctors or in the medical field or anything like that and a great number of people that quote unquote drink the fluid to make this decision. And then if it comes back overwhelmingly that ninety-five percent of the school does not want mask use. What are we willing to go against?
Information.
Are we willing to go against the CDC and D H H S recommendations and the whole bit? Because we don't have a school full of epidemiologists to make the decision. And we've got to be prepared. If we're going to do it, we got to be prepared to act on it. And you're not wrong. I'm not okay with that.
Nothing is, nothing has gotten better, right, in the last six, eight weeks. And in fact, just looking at the toolkit today, they updated the toolkit on the seventeenth. Page six clearly says, New Hampshire D H S recommends mask usage in all areas, in all regions where transmission level is substantial. Right? It's, it's, you're not at a plateau. We're not even a semblance of a plateau.
What is substantial? What is that?
D H H S does.
Yeah, but what is substantial? I mean, is it one case?
It's a range.
They haven't regret.
Right. They, they're applying, we have to trust that professionals and the experts are applying the science. And it's not up to the board of people that aren't professionals or scientists to say, well, we should look at the raw data and make our own assessment. We have to trust that the Department of Health and Human Services is giving us good reliable information. And they are recommending, we are following their recommendations.
It's inaccurate for, for the community to say that we are making our own decisions when we're not. We're trusting professionals. The, the professionals and we're relying on that data. That's what we're going by. And that's why I'm uncomfortable with the survey. I think that everybody deserves to have a voice. I think that we show as a board that we want the community's input. However, with a decision like this, what are we going to do with that information from the survey? If, if the majority of folks say they don't want a mask, are we comfortable taking away this precaution that is keeping our school open? That, that's the part that I'm struggling with.
Our stance has been guided from D H H S.
Yes.
And that, that has not wavered, right? Case counts are getting worse and.
I mean, we didn't revoke tonight, so I mean, we are, we definitely stand there right now as we're going to stay masked, but just a matter of you want to send that survey out or not.
I just want to make sure that everybody's satisfied and has a voice because it's public education when it comes down to it.
But when I look at, you know, they're talking about the strategic planning, right? They had an open house. A few came, voiced their opinions, had a good conversation apparently, gave input, feedback, and that's with people at the meeting, you know, opposing and people at the meeting in favor, you know, emails, all this feedback is happening and.
I'm good with whatever has happened. I just want to make sure that we address it.
If you want to vote on it, there has to be a motion. If you don't want to vote on it, then no motion.
Okay, there's nothing else then at this point. I guess we're going to adjourn tonight's meeting and have a.
Just to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. All those favor. All those close.